And I'd like to welcome all visitors. And also remind you, if you have cell phones, please either turn them off or put in the vibrator, if you would please. Now, on to 6:00 PM right now, I want to recognize the open meeting law and poster and the location of the poster, right back over there. And let's go ahead and recognize our roll call.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Byway?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ashner, yeah, Schalkopf?
Yes.
Oles?
Yes. Okay. That puts us into our next area of election of officers, which I get to turn it over to Mr. Norvell, and he'll serve as our chairperson for the election of officers.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I will take nominations then for president of the board for the 2012 year.
I'd like to nominate Dennis Del Meyer.
Second.
My move is cease, nomination ceases.
Yeah. I don't want to say.
Second that.
Good. Second, Mark?
Motion by Jim.
Right?
Yep. Second by... I guess we probably need to vote for the nomination ceasing first. Can we just do that by a vote? Voice vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And soon there's not a reason to hand out a ballot. Nope. Dennis just moving to the... Is Dennis okay with just moving to the...
(laughing).
Dennis, I'll trade you seats.
(inaudible).
Get up, buddy, quick, it's cold out there.
There's changeable, haven't you? You're not caving right now. Okay. I'll keep going, Dennis.
Yeah, it's all right.
Nominations for vice president.
Dave Ashner, the vice president.
Dave has been nominated by Jim. All second. Any further nominations?
We nominate Jana Schalkopf.
Hannah's been nominated by Sherry.
All second then.
I saw him. Any further nominations?
Do we have to nominate, do we have to nominate Cease or can't nominate?
We can. Okay. You each have a... I don't know what color that is, ballot in front of you, but if you want to vote for either Dave or Hannah, and then hold those and pass those, it'll be into Dennis.
Four to four. Let's talk about, I mean, Hannah's been...
I think it's from the past, but I don't know.
Oh, but I mean, Dave, I know you've taken the new position, are you going to be staying in the area, or do you have to move, or, I mean...
Uh, right now, I'm not moving.
Is there a look in the future that you might have to, or...
Well, that could happen to anybody, Sean.
I know, but that's why I'm just asking, if that's part of your...
No, it's not a department.
Can I pass that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's pass that on.
Then you're just changing, you know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So, the...
Okay. Yep. One more. I have my business then. Sorry, I didn't just get my notes right. He is secretary.
Nominate Sherry, yeah?
I'd like to nominate Jim Donovan.
Sherry was nominated by Sean. Jim was nominated by Dave. Any further nominations? If not, let's vote for either Sherry or Jim, and try again. It'll not be four to four. Okay. Sherry.
Sherry. Sherry. Sherry. Sherry. Jim.
Five to three, Sherry.
Sherry is the secretary.
And you can move it, you can put it any place you want there, all we had to do was make sure it was on the agenda, which you can move it up anywhere you want.
I think in our agenda, we'll move review, consider, and act upon bond resolution to the top rather than the bottom, and that way, some of you might not want to stay for policy review and things like that. So, uh... We can have the reports from the administration first, and then we'll do that.
We got a legal media.
And declare a legal media, I'm sorry.
Where are you getting moved at, like, to...
I think so.
Before the approval of the adminis...
I think so.
Okay. If you don't make a motion, you can turn this thing over to me. All second.
Sherry, yeah?
I did, and Sean.
Okay, roll call.
Lightline?
Yes.
Nynaez? Ashner?
Yes.
Schalkopf?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yeah.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Any release or any questions? Do we have public comment before we start? Okay. We'll have reports from the administration. Jim?
Not a whole lot to add to the report that I turned in. A lot of kids being recognized for a lot of honors, and nice recognition for kids with many belts, or with believers and achievers, and then also with our academic all-state kids. We have principal honor roll for episode coming up, board members, you were invited to come. That is February 1, at 7:30 in the morning in the high school gymnasium. And the only other thing I want to mention is, students and staff had a camp war that went on raising money for Pam Everly. Stacy is in the process of training. She's done a lot of marathons, or half marathons. They have purchased a wheelchair type of device for Stacy to push Pam in a half marathon in Lincoln. Student council officers went over, last week presented the check to Pam, and she was pretty touched by that type of reaction with our kids, so, very nice situation. Is there any questions on, anything on the report, or any other? Thank you.
There's a lot of things to talk about tonight, so I won't add too much to the written report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Obviously, we're back, back in school, started last week. We've had a very nice start to the second semester, things, things are very productive. We had, we had a great start, maybe the weather being nice had, had something to do with that, but really need to compliment the staff for their preparedness to start the second semester, and compliment our students on, on their willingness to get engaged in the learning process as quickly as possible. So, I'm pleased with, with the start that we've had to the semester. Other than that, I just wanted to include as concisely as I could some information about the assessments coming up over the course of this, this spring. Our, our building, because of the grade levels that are tested, probably have more assessments than, than the other two buildings, and so, it's, it's quite a lot for us to juggle and handle. We have the four statewide tests now, writing, reading, math, and science, and all four of those are now being fully implemented, and grades five, six, seven, and eight will take all those in our, will take the, excuse me, eighth grade will take the writing, fifth and eighth grade will take the science, it's the first year for the science, and then all four grades will take the reading and math. It's, all those tests are online, and so, it, it causes, there's a great need for planning and cooperation, and our staff here already, before we left for Christmas break, were already all scheduled, and everybody had worked out the schedule for getting their testing done before the end of the testing window, so again, I have to compliment them on that. But to the typical person on the street, it might seem kind of confusing, or you might be overwhelmed by the, the names of the tests, the timing of the tests, et cetera, et cetera, so I just, I thought I would give you some of that information, so you kind of had an idea of what, what our assessment schedule looks like this spring. In addition to that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I would add that with the donation to Pam Everly's purchase of that driving wheelchair, the elementary also donated from a box stop collection, so on one of our days of nicer weather, the fourth graders locked that over to her, and it was, she was quite moved by that as well, so the elementary participated in that. Also, with the NISA, we've met, the fourth graders will take that, although the writing test will be in paper pencil still, for they won't move to the online, so they'll be paper pencil, and we've met and reviewed the manual and have that scheduled to start at the opening of the, of the window at the end of the month, so we're geared up and ready to go, and also with the gearing up, we're assembling kindergarten packets, so we are getting, and we're getting ready for that, to send those out, and set the dates for roundup and parent meetings, so spring is, is here for us in that regard, unless you have any other questions, that's all I have to add.
Any prediction on the side?
It looks right now to be similar to, to this year.
My turn?
Yeah.
In my written report, I told you all that Paul Unmark, who's from the Fillmore County Hospital, invited us to have a private tour of the new hospital on Wednesday night, January 18th, at 7:00, and you and your spouse are welcome to attend, and we'll just meet out there. I guess at the front doors, or whatever, Paul gives me more information, I'll, I'll forward that to you, but we appreciate his efforts in letting us see it, it's a beautiful looking facility from the outside, and I'm certainly anxious to, to see what it looks like on the inside, and so, we're pleased that he invited us. I put in front of you a climate survey. We will put the results of the climate survey on our website, but I haven't done it yet, because I wanted the board to have the first opportunity to review it. I'm not going to go through it with you, but everybody has a copy, I think we had 17 questions, and there are the comments, people were able to write comments, we had 103 responses, it was all an online survey. I, I would, I would tell you that, you know, my part, I'd like you to take a look at questions 10, 15, and 17, when you have time, take a look at those, those are questions, some of the questions I think have come up on 10 was about our drug and alcohol policy, and it's pretty overwhelming support for our people, for our drug and alcohol policy. In fact, we had a pretty significant percentage, I think 18%, think it should be even more strict than, than what it is, so, pretty good support though, overall of that policy. On question 15, we, we asked people if they feel welcome coming to the school to talk to the building principal, and again, it's, it's around 80% that strongly agree, and 12% are neutral, and there was really only about 7% that said they don't feel comfortable. Of course, we'd feel better if it was 100%, but still, that is, I think, a pretty strong, a strong percentage. And then, question 17 is, is asking the people if they're, for the most part, satisfied with the Fillmore Central School District, and again, it's pretty overwhelming that they feel pretty good about it. So, we do the climate survey, we try to do it every two to three years, and we ask different questions. Sometimes we ask things particular, like about our, last time we left, I asked a lot of things about our lunch program and things like that, so we try to gather what information we can, and we, we take it to the steering committee and administrators' meeting, and we try to use the results of the survey to help us shape some of our decision making down the road, so I just wanted you to, to make sure you took a look at that.
Is this the first time that you've done it online, or have you done it online before?
Well, we did it online last time, I believe, and we, what we did, Sherry, was at parent teacher conferences, we had computers set up, and so people did it at parent teacher conferences, but this time, we actually mailed everyone a letter, and asking them to go online on our website, and do it on the website, so, the turnout was pretty similar.
And these are parents or students?
These were parents of students that we sent letters to, yeah. The president, Dennis, and secretary Sherry, before you leave tonight, Lindhouser needs you to sign inside the lines of this box, do not touch the lines, so they can go on the checks. That's her direction, so, gotta stay within the lines if you can, and she puts it on the computer to, so we can do payroll and things like that, so, that's all, Dennis.
Okay. Then we'll go into action items.
Yeah, I guess we're going to move action item J up to...
We're going to move it to the top.
Up to the beginning here, so we'll go in front of A, and it has to deal with the bond resolution and the work that our facilities committee did, and so, we're going to take this time to go ahead and let TJ and Jay, and whoever wants to go first, just make maybe a short presentation, and Jay will need you to talk to us about the resolution, and what exactly we have to do here tonight, if the board votes in favor, et cetera, so... TJ, maybe you want to start and kind of go over with everyone here, kind of the diagram, and what you've come up with.
Okay. I don't know if everybody can see this from all different directions, but some of you have been here, I recognize a lot of faces. We've met, I believe, four times now, since the beginning of December, we've been on a, on a pretty aggressive schedule, and we started out, our first meeting, we talked about what you wanted in a, in a bond project, and we had all sorts of great ideas thrown out, and, and we took that back, and with the help of Sampson Construction, kind of came up with a, with a budget for what, what that would take. Since that time, we've been formulating options for the bond, trying to get it to a budget number that, that in general, people felt was, felt was acceptable, and we've also come up with a conceptual option for what, what this building, what, what the additions on the building would look like. We made it up to, I think we had four options at one time, and we've narrowed it back down, everybody worked well together to come up with this final option, and there were pros and cons of each option, but I think we've landed on an option that's, that's really good. And in the last meeting, that committee decided to take it to the board and, and let you decide. A little bit about the option that, that was selected, it, the, the main components are a new practice gym, and, as well as a new performing arts center. But with that, you can see the plan of the building, this is the existing building, your existing gymnasium. To the south, there's an addition of an auditorium, a new commons area, some drama and green rooms, and a shop that goes along with that, as well as a new music room. We had input from the music teacher that the risers in the existing room don't work very well, and that room didn't work terribly well functionally, also having some adjacency to the auditorium is, is, is nice. Filling back in that music room with art, because we added a gym up to the north, as well as, as new locker rooms, a wrestling room, and a weight room, and we felt that it was, it was important to take a corridor, which is, doesn't exist there now, through the, through the school this way, so that you could make it from the front of the school back to this practice gym without having to go all the way, all the way around. So, the main components, new auditorium, music room, practice gym, locker rooms, weight room, wrestling, don't miss anything. Dave? Yes, I'm sorry, and as well as renovation of the, of the science classrooms, that was a big component that everyone wanted to keep in the, in the bond. We, we got to the point where everyone wanted to see what this looked like on the site, you know, how did this impact, or how close were we getting to the football field and concession stands, so, we developed a site plan that shows how the, the site could be developed, as well as traffic patterns with buses coming in from, from the south, loading and unloading up near the school, and going back out to the left, and then traffic patterns for the, for the parking stalls. Also able to get two double-sided parking in this path back here, there was some concern at one point that this was getting too close to concessions, or to the, to the football field, so we, we moved it back to the west a little bit to widen the... So, we've had some really preliminary discussions with the city, that is a city street, and they seem amenable to, to align that perhaps. In general, that's, that's the plan. Any questions?
All right. Before we get to the resolution, I can go over the numbers real quick. Have a few extra copies if anybody would like one. No one?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
One left.
I know we talked a little bit about this last week, the difference in the, in the project scope and the size of the bond issue, a couple of different factors that go into that, one being the costs associated with issuing the bonds and the legal fees and the cost selling the bonds, as well as the first interest payment, because we're voting in May, probably they should bond sometime in June, first interest payment will be due sometime in December, you will not have, had the opportunity to levy for that, because you'll set your levy in September of 2012, we'd be collecting in 13, we won't have any money available for our December 15th payment 2012, and so we got a couple of different options. Typically, we just increase the size of the bond issue to make that first payment, and that's what I've shown here, as well as, we're talking 9.8 million dollars, more than likely, what we'll do is split that up into two issues. If the interest rate environment is favorable, we'll go ahead and, and issue roughly half of this month sometime in June, and wait a couple months, come back, issue the second half sometime around August or September. If we issue August, September, we're okay to go to June of 2013 before we make that first payment, thus you can levy for that, and you don't have to borrow that interest payment on that half. As you can see, I've split these up between June and August, bond issues, and they're roughly 4.8 million and 5 million. Under uses of funds, you can see that the combination of the two will make a deposit into the construction fund, the $9,587,762.55. That, if you turn to the next page, page two, operation project construction fund, I just factored that we would possibly be done with this project sometime around December 2013, that might be somewhat aggressive, so I'm underestimating the amount of interest that you're going to earn in the construction fund, because right now, at a quarter of a percent, and that's kind of the average, and it all depends on if the local bank is, is going to take this money until you spend it, and it's kind of hard to believe that a bank might not be excited about taking $9 million, but we're kind of in an environment where their loan demand is down, and they're sitting on a lot of money, and they don't want to take a lot of risk, hence is why we're typically seeing anywhere from a quarter of a percent all the way up to 1%, but it kind of just depends on the environment we're in at the time we issue the bonds. And so, we're looking at about 17 and a half thousand dollars of just interest earned in the construction funds. That is one of the negatives of the low interest rate environment, previous years, we were on a bond issue of this size, we've had to do a couple hundred thousand in interest earned. But on the backside, you're going to get the benefit for 20 years of borrowing and lower costs. If you turn back to the first page, cost of issuance, that included for the 132,000, that's basically 1.4%, and that includes the underwriting fees, the legal fees, get the bonds registered, the printing of the preliminary final official statement. It pays for the first year of the, the opening and first year of your registrar paying agent, and they're responsible for making payment, paying on your bonds. Now, Mark, do you currently have your own registrar paying agent on your QC pump bonds?
Uh, no.
I don't think so, that was probably worse, though.
We got Geneva State Bank on one of them, and then not sure on the other one.
Okay. So, yeah, Geneva State Bank, we're going to do on these two issues, and we'll work with them, we'll get to that point. Deposit to capitalize interest fund, 75,037, that's to make that first interest payment in December 2012, on that 4.8 million dollars of bonds. Second page, operational construction fund, we're going over that. Page three, debt service schedule, I showed, I'm showing this on an annual basis for the simple fact of we can get it on one page, you'll have interest payments twice a year, and then principal once a year in December, and you can see that first interest payment is 75,131. And so, by splitting the issue, we're saving, saving about 75,000 in additional bonds that we have to issue. What you can see, over, over the 20-year period, we're looking at right around 700,000 with the two issues combined, the principal and interest payments. Our average coupon on this is 3.64%. That is about a half a percent higher than if we read the market today. We do not know what the market's going to be. We do not know what the market's going to be six months from now, or four months from now when we issue bonds. And so we want to make sure that we're estimating high, just in case interest rates rise a little bit between now and then. Hopefully, it'll stay the same or go down, but I don't know how much percentage of it will go down. So we built a little bit of a cushion in there, as far as that's concerned. And the all-inclusive cost, kind of in that middle section at the bottom, the AIC, 3.75%. That's your overall cost of this moron. It takes into account the interest rate, as well as the costs associated with issuing the bonds. If you turn to the next page, page four, tax levy impact. For a $9.8 million bond issue paid back over 20 years, with your current taxable valuation of $607 million, we're looking at around the levy of about $11.5 cents per $100 of taxable valuation. So someone who loans a $100,000 piece of property, piece of taxable property, is going to be looking at an additional $115,000 a year in taxes. Now, the principal and interest payments are level, meaning that the principal interest is virtually the same each year. So as your valuation goes up, your levy's going to go down, but what you're asking for is virtually the same. As well as, if your valuation for some reason goes down, your levy's going to go up, but we're still asking for that same dollar.
Jay, for example, right now, we're basing it on our current valuation. When we go to set our levy, next October, we're going to have a new valuation. It's probably not going to be 11 and a half cents on the levy, correct?
Correct.
Only if our valuation would stay the same, right?
Yes.
So it's probably, if the trend goes as in past years, it's going to be a little bit less than 11 and a half cents in order to create that $700,000 for the payment.
Right. That is correct. To give you an idea, if you turn to page five, it's the second tax levy impact page, and it gives you the current interest rates as of today, when we're in the market today. And you can see in the far right-hand column, we're right at 11 cents. But it's roughly about $800,000 difference in interest, just that half a percent. So we do have a cushion in what we would tell the voters. And so, kind of showing a worst-case scenario, when we actually issue the bonds, we'll be requesting less from them as far as taxes. Because the last thing we want them to do is tell them 11 and a half cents, or tell them 11, have it come in 11 and a half.
Financial questions for Jay? We'll talk about the resolution, but I just want to make sure that we have any questions on this part.
As far as the resolution. Greg?
Any of the bonds can be offered local? How's the plan on that?
Absolutely. We'll make the bonds available locally on a first-come, first-served basis, along with data marketing. Those folks that live in the district will have the first right of refusal. I understand you probably have brokers that live in the district, or have clients that live in the district. If that's the case, we'll make bonds available to those brokers, even if they aren't Meredith's brokers, so they can sell bonds to their clients. They just kind of have to let us know sometime between now and when we issue bonds, that they're in the district and are interested in selling those bonds. Yes, we will make them available on first-come, first-served basis to local taxpayers. The resolution, if you would, is, if you return just to the last page, and let's take a look at the sample ballot, and the language on the sample ballot. It shall, Fillmore County School District 25, Fillmore Central Public Schools in the state of Nebraska, issue bonds of said district in the principal amount of not secured seats, $9,800,000. If that's what, mine's blank, so we need to write that number in. For the purpose of paying the cost of constructing additions to and renovations of the existing high school facility to include the addition of fire sprinklers, classroom improvements, a practice gym, gymnasium, an auditorium, and providing for necessary furniture, equipment, and apparatus for such school building in addition. Said bonds to be issued from time to time to be very interested at a rate or rates to be come due at such time or times, and to have such other terms and provisions, all as may be fixed and determined by the Board of Education of the district. And shall the district cause to be levied and collected annually a special levy of taxes against all the taxable property in said district sufficient in rate and amount to pay the interest, principal, and premium on said bonds as the same become due. Are there any changes in the ballot language as far as the description of the project that we would buy? It is left in somewhat general terms from the attorneys, to the simple fact of, if something comes up during the construction phase, and we need to make a change, we can do that without having any problems. But essentially, you're building an addition to include a gym, an auditorium, renovation of some classrooms, as well as upgrade to meet some curb codes with the fire sprinklers. The parking is considered a part of the renovation. Renovation and addition if there would be new parking installed.
Right now, I don't think there's any new parking, is there, TJ?
No.
Just maybe where the buses pull in next to the auditorium?
Right, there would be some renovation of parking, but no new parking.
Any questions for Jay about this?
The date we're looking at is March 13th.
March 13th.
And I talked with Amy Nelson, of course, she needs the resolution before she can. She basically said it would be two polling places, one in Fairmont, one in Geneva. And the cost per election is roughly $6,000, she would say, for a special election. She said somewhere in that neighborhood.
What would the cost if we were to primary, here in law, how would we do our elections?
The primary cost is pretty minimal, it's just a matter of getting that space on the ballot. I didn't ask you the cost, but I think it's pretty minimal. I don't know what that is.
Any other questions for Jay or the architects?
If you'd like a regular election, they can do mail-in ballots, too, right?
Yeah, they could. She wasn't, she didn't feel like she was ready to do the mail-in yet.
But I mean, they can request.
Absentee.
An absentee vote.
Yeah, yeah. And registered voters, if you haven't registered yet, you have to do it like the third Friday previous, I can't remember, she gave me all that stuff, but, third Friday previous to March 13th or something like that, so. But yeah, there's absentee ballots.
And I believe you can actually go into the courthouse and vote early. Any other questions?
Jay, do we need anything other than the motion, and second, and a vote? Do we need, we'll need if it passes, signatures on that one page?
Yes.
Okay. You got that page?
I have.
Amy Nelson, I guess that's a good one.
To act upon the bond resolution with the election March 13th for $9.8 million at the high school.
Any discussion?
I do, Dennis.
Yeah?
I don't know. I mean, it seems like a free additions project. I went to some of the areas and heard what people said. I think that's been discussed before. It started out as a replacement downtown gym project, and it's grown, and a lot of the things that are great, I guess I'm a little concerned with the total amount of dollars we're asking for, you know, $1.8. And this economy, to me, seems quite a bit, understanding that our valuations keep going up, too. I do understand that. I guess a couple of questions I have that I haven't. Assuming we do this in the past, is what have we been doing with the old downtown gym that we have now? I mean, has there been any thoughts or discussions? I mean, since I've been off work, there hasn't been. That's something some people have asked me already, you know. What happens, does GAD still have the same access to our new facility as what we have now? Is that something we're going to tell everybody that we have to work on it, or probably don't know, or? Another one, it has to do with the theater, and we do use that for a few things. Will we bring any ramp to the cinema association?
Yeah, it's pretty much.
Because I mean, the cinema that passes, we're obviously going to do it up there, so.
It's pretty much just a shared agreement.
I didn't know if we've been, you know, I know we do it, but I can offer you this up, and there's a small donation for that.
I can give you my opinion. I mean, I think it's a taxpayer facility that would still allow our gym and our theater be used by GAD in conjunction with the school, and scheduled on the nights when we have it available. And I don't think that would change anything, at least not in my version. The hard part about the downtown gym is it's hard for us already to take care of it, and it's attached to someone else's building. And so, you know, I guess I would prefer that, you know, the schools seek to sell it to an interested buyer, because we're already having trouble taking care of it. If we're going to expand our existing facility, it's not going to make it any easier for us to take care of it, so.
I agree, I guess I was just asking, you know.
But we haven't talked about it.
Anybody have thought about it? I'm not sure if it's been talked about. To me, if you take in front of voters, that's something I think people don't want to know. You know, are we going to lose the access that we have, you know? Pretty out of the act that we're exploring. Something I'm aware of, but it is, is, I'm not my own change, so.
Any other discussion?
My only question I have is, have you found anyone in the community that's willing to step it up? March 13th isn't far away. Do we have some community leader who's willing to get out there and help kind of facilitate these public meetings?
Yeah, I don't think we have any one person. I think we have a lot of people that'll share and be a part of the committee. And I think the public meetings really are just for information. So I'll work with Jay and TJ, and we'll present the public meetings, and it's for information purposes only. I think the goal is to get people to learn about the project and to vote how they want to vote, not be an arm twister or cheerleader. We're going to let people make their own decisions, and I think that's the approach we need to take. We're going to provide them the information and the detail. But I think the facilities committee and others that have worked hard on this for over two years will certainly, you know, do their best to stay organized and to work towards the project, so.
I've been encouraged to the meetings that I've gone to with the facility committee, the architects, and picking the architects and so forth, with the enthusiasm of the group. And I'm sure if we do decide to pass this, this same enthusiasm will carry forth to get the project to board. Any other discussion?
Roll call?
Asher?
Yes.
Shelkoff?
Yes.
Domeyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
None, yes, Maloney?
Yes.
Motion, after, for the bond resolution. The resolution says the secretary will call us to publish the sample ballot along with the term of action. Don't worry about that. The duty vice landlord officer will be the, what kind of, go to the chair, and cover all the public motions. The school will not have to worry about it. Maybe everybody's signatures in the, in the small print, the small print office Yeah, we'll sign it. Let's get this out. We don't want anybody leave till we get all the signatures out. Yeah, we'll back to Action Island, what you were supposed to, the page, the minutes.
Now we're starting to talk, Action Island, approved, minutes of the following board meeting, December 12th, and we're going to have a motion.
I have one correction and one addition that I would like to make, two minutes. Under the minutes, it said that I had approved, I did not on roll call. So it needs to show that Asher, Domeyer, Donovan, Kleinschmidt, Lightline, said I and they.
What do you, you would tie it to?
On the minutes, the minutes of the December 12th. And then the addition that I would like to make is, under the board member resignation, I would like to add the wording, "with appreciation for his many years of service" to the board.
So you're making really an amendment to the minutes, right? So somebody will need to second Cherry's amendment. And then we would have to vote on the amendment, and then go back and vote on the minutes, So Dennis, the amendment is that, in the December 12th minutes, that, under the section labeled minutes, that under nay votes, there should be the word, none should have voted nay instead of a. And that's under board member resignation, that we accept the resignation of board member Roger Jacobson, with appreciation to many years of service affecting December 10th. Is that correct?
We need to vote on the amendment. It was seconded by Dave, so. Roll call?
Okay, Asher?
Yes.
Shelkoff?
Yes.
Domey?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
We, yes, Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go back and approve the minutes.
Right, we already had, we already had a motion in the second.
She had a place to vote on.
We had a motion in the second. She didn't want to start a motion. She's already admitted it, though, so.
So we need to vote on the minutes, and?
Yes.
Okay, roll call?
Asher?
Yes.
Shelkoff?
Yes.
Domey?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
None, yes, Maloney?
Yes.
Thank you.
Receive, review, and accept financial reports. Moved by Mark, seconded by June. Receive the financial reports as presented. Roll call?
Shelkoff?
Yes.
Domeyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
None, yes, Asher?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Review and approve general fund claims. Need a motion? Moved by June. Seconded by Mark. We approved the general fund claims. I'll give you the amount again, because I sent it out late, so the amount is, let's get through it here, $338,508.83. We have a $224,000 issue quarterly bill, that's what jumped them up a little bit this month, so, $338,508.83. Roll call?
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
None, yes, Asher?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Appointment of the district treasurer. Need a motion?
Almend.
Second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Jim. That we appoint Glenn Hauser district treasurer. Roll call?
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
None, yes, Asher?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Now, will this actually be a motion on this board?
It can be, I guess. We, we, we said we put it on as an action item in case someone wanted to make a motion. But basically, I think the board just needs to decide. And I give you, I guess, two options that I thought to consider. The way we did with Bob Webb was we did wait. He resigned in December. It was his last year coming up and we waited until November and had the election. I talked with some other school districts and one of the ways they do it is that they take applications and then the president would just appoint one. But that appointment, of course, would have to be approved or ratified by the entire board. So, I mean, I think either way would be good. There are other ways too. Basically, our attorney says you can pretty much do it any way that you want to do it, to be honest with you.
There's no real precedent or anything that we have to follow?
No. The precedent we have had was, we have to, that's the only.
Well, we have two or three that's not, we have two.
Whoever beat the president, we do.
Yeah.
I think being this close to when they got to file, I, I think we have to put it off and not fill it.
I think when Sean came on, there was like two years, two more years left on that term. And I think we felt like we needed to fill that right away. And that is probably the right thing to do at the time.
So is everyone okay with staying an eight-member board until after, will it be until next year?
Well, we'll know if, we'll know in November. Who gets elected. But they won't be able to serve until January. But certainly, I would think they would probably start coming to meetings in December.
December.
Yeah.
Is that okay with everyone, stay with eight members?
Oh, okay with that.
Okay. We don't need a motion for that.
I don't, I think I would make a motion, to be honest with you.
We need a motion for that.
I think I'd make a motion to do it that way, so we have it done and voted on.
I would move to stay with eight, that the board is telling.
It's moved by Randy.
My second.
Second by Sean. To stay at eight members until after the November election. At that time, then that person will take over for Jim. Further discussion? Roll call?
Maloney?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
None, yes, Lightwine?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Review the policy four one seven five.
Basically, we reviewed that last month. It was professional drill policy. We, as administrators, have been working on it a couple of years and made some changes. It went over with the staff. I think it was well received. So I'd ask you to consider to approving that.
We have a motion for policy four one seven five.
Second.
Second by Jim. Roll call?
Shelkov?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
None, yes, Asher?
Review and approve board policies twenty twenty and twenty thirty-five.
And I think on twenty twenty, we just eliminated a word. I think Jody put in both the correction on the white copy and then the purple copy is for your policy handbook. So I think there was just a couple of minor changes. Added a word by instead of in on two thousand and thirty-five and erased the word in on two thousand and twenty.
Did we eliminate this?
Was it xed out because we weren't changing?
Because it's xed out because it wasn't one we were changing. It just happened to be on the same page, so.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I want to do more trees.
Further discussion on that? Roll call?
No, I would move.
I haven't questioned it, I'm sorry.
I thought the board policies twenty twenty and twenty thirty-five is correct.
Okay. In a second. Now, discussion? Roll call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
None, yes, Asher?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Review, review and approve Southeast Nebraska Power School Cooperative Interlocal Agreement.
We've been using Power School for probably six or seven years now. And it's, it's the agreement or it's the software we use to manage student records, basically. Report cards, attendance, discipline, et cetera, et cetera. We belong to this consortium cooperative to keep the costs low. We'd have to renew it every two years, something like that.
By Jim?
Second.
Jim? It's going to be by Mark. If that was a tie, or you lost.
Yeah, I lost it.
If we don't do it, we have to take it.
Yeah, we, we want to use Power School. We'd have to go on a volun and be a lot higher cost.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call?
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes, Asher?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Review and approve end jump interlocal agreement, natural gas purchase.
I'd like to move.
Second?
My second.
It's moved by Jana and seconded by Sean.
That, that's the same kind of agreement. They purchase natural gas in bulk and there's about fifty-eight schools that belong to this and they purchase by bulk on a set price. And it's, it's normally been very, very good for us to save money, too.
Any further discussion on that? Roll call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes, Asher?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Yes, I got a question for Mark.
Yeah, sure.
In my packet, were these the originals for those?
For the resolutions?
For the, for these two interlocals?
Yes, I think those both are the originals. So those are probably the copies we'll have to get out. And I think I can do it probably after a series of minutes. I think I just need my signature, but I just need to record who voted yes and who voted no on it. So as long as it's in there, it's out of work. So thank you, Dave.
Now, we're on discussion items. Board self-evaluation.
I think last time what he'd asked me to do was to contact other schools and gather some policies. Is that it or not?
As I say, that's, that's what I thought. Just for the, not for our review of our selves. Am I wrong?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know.
We just did the review of the board evaluation we just did. And we took from, throughout the conference and put those together. So basically, what it's coming off is mostly centennials is where we got the board evaluation.
The board evaluation, see, we were supposed to set goals. Basically, we've got the information from the last meeting in January, and we're setting our policies this December.
Well, we usually do that at a retreat. We usually do that at a separate board meeting. I didn't.
I think one of the things we need to ask Mark is for you to get superintendent evaluations of other schools for the, for the next one we pick up.
Okay, I must have misunderstood.
Yeah, I just see how you could.
Because I'm not, I'm not necessarily interested in changing my evaluation. I mean, that, and my evaluation is something you and I have to agree upon, the document. I'm not, I'm not interested in changing the document. I'm interested in changing how you do the document. That is my, my interest. I don't, I think the document is fine. I think the way you arrive at the terms to evaluate the components of the document is, is, has been done poorly. If I say that without very complimentary feelings, so, I mean.
So you're okay with the document?
Superintendent evaluation should be something we both agree upon. Both, both the person getting evaluated and the evaluator agrees to the, the principles of the document. And I don't, I don't have any problem with the document, but I do have a problem with how you come about the conclusions on the document. And that's, I think, the part that we have to discuss. And maybe that's the part that you wanted me to get from other schools. You know, maybe that's the part, how do they, how do they find out these things? Maybe that's what you wanted to know.
Yeah, I think one of the things like Randy had gone to the school board meeting and said, one school had, Lincoln? Had what just said satisfactory, unsatisfactory. And if you said unsatisfactory, you had to list the reasons why. So that it would be constructive. Ours isn't very constructive.
Right.
Right, to me, it's, it's kind of, you can wish your worship a little bit. You know, yeah, it's all right. Because we have a, a, five numbers I write for. But the way I like, the way I like that one is we either are here, or here, or, yeah, it's okay. It's not, yeah, it's okay, pretty good, yeah, it's okay, yeah. But to me, it's a little bit decisive.
And if you said it was outstanding, you had to give a reason why.
And if you, if you put, you know, outstanding, you had to give a reason to it.
But if you just wanted to say it was satisfactory, you just.
Would that simplify, you know, I guess, I, I understand what you're saying. We, we were here and here and you wanted us to come to a average or a conclusion. Well, that's, it didn't get across that way. I understand that. Would this document maybe help us get to, you know, more of a, of the eight or nine people that, you know, you don't say it?
Well, one thing Mark mentioned here that did last month was, one of the topics is how we look at staff. We all have our opinion, but did any of us ask any of the staff? And so I think that's maybe part of what we need to do is, is figure out how to come up with that. Did we ask the principal to?
Well, then we've got principals involved in evaluating their boss. I guess to me, it's our job and, we're not going to be able to go out and ask all the teachers. You know, I don't think that's right. We ask them for survey. You know, it's our perceived perception. And what you're saying, it was from here to here. It should be somewhere closer to the middle. For a final, what you're saying, a final grade of the lack of that word. You know, we've got one out of five and.
There was certainly not much consensus, that was the problem.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, necessarily all has to be in the middle. It can be on the one end, it can be on the other end, but there was no, there was no real consensus. I guess I, I misunderstood. And I can get copies of other evaluations. I think that's what you want to see, so I thought, I thought.
And before we fill them out, I think we should all go to class and kind of see what we're supposed to be looking for. So that we'd all kind of come together with the same type of consensus, so that we don't have some of the very overheads and what we need to kind of discuss. But not, not the evaluation of the document itself.
Right.
The evaluation should be a roadmap for Mark. Everything I've learned throughout my years in administration, it said, it should be a roadmap. This is, you know, what we see. And that should give him a guide for next year to say, okay, here's what the board wants me to accomplish. And that's, it gives him a, a straight arrow, here's where I'm going to.
Then maybe instead of us filling out individually, maybe we can still fill out individually, but maybe we as a board should get together before we present it to you. Because I can see, no matter how you fill out any evaluation, we are going to be over the board because that's just everyone's view.
We're going to have different opinions. That's just.
Yeah.
It's a long, that's.
Again, I think way back in September, I, I said it doesn't do me any good to have you all fill out individually. Doesn't do me any good. I think it's best if you can get together and fill out one.
Yeah, I think it should be one.
I, I think that's, that's more useful.
Goals for a board next year, to me, that's, you know, for your goal. And can we do that in an executive session without possibly?
Yeah, it's perfectly legal. In fact, it'd be, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's, why is that a pleasure? I assume the board, the board.
That's just like, it's no different than the principals evaluating their teachers. That evaluation is between them and the staff member. It's private, it's in a file. You know, you don't have access to it. Unless that teacher would grant you access to it, you don't have access to it. It's the same, it's the same mind. That evaluation is between you and me. And so it doesn't, it's not to be shared with the public unless I would grant that, grant that access.
I mean, we have a lot of things we have to be public about. I'm sure that we could, we could get together as you and I was having.
So what is it you want me to do then? Let's get that straight.
Well, I think you need to get Lincoln's copy.
Yes.
Lincoln's evaluation.
Well, that, that would give us something else to look at. Now, if we do it now on flat of hand, or after a camera, or whatever, maybe the picture do it. And then, like you said, I think it's something we usually approve the document, how it's valid. Like what Sean just said, we need to give it a, a blowback.
Yeah, okay. We get Lincoln's eval and maybe a couple others, okay? Is that so?
Then it's board self-evaluation. Do we want to change that or please? Anybody got an opinion on that?
I guess I'd leave it the same for right now.
I think you guys will want to look into it last year. That's no problem. It's just that we need to look at it and see what we can do with it.
Then do we have to review board policies, Mark?
Uh, well, you just turned in your checklist. You have your checklist?
Turn in your checklist.
I will take your checklist and then we'll review those you had marked next time.
If you're blank, you don't have.
That's all right. That's why we're doing it. That's why we're doing it.
Are you kidding? You did blank?
That's good, that's good, that's good. Okay. Now we're on discussion item C, superintendent contract extension.
Well, we, I thought we did it in January. Billy reminded me, you always do it in February. So I think I put it on last month as a discussion. So I just wanted to remind you it'll be done next time. I have a contract for next year, which would be, what, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen? So the extension would be for thirteen and fourteen. So it will be a contract extension or anything with a contract can't be done in closed sessions. All got to be done in open sessions, so.
So I have to?
Just to remind you. Yes.
Next month.
It might actually be next month, yes.
Then we're down to the next meeting for Monday, February thirteenth. Looks like there is some context. Should we want to change again or do you?
I don't have to change. I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
It's getting too complicated, not only for me, but for the patrons to know in the meeting. I had phone calls Monday night. Not a whole reason, but.
Okay. Girls' sub-district boys' game at Sutton and reserve boys' game at Therson.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the girls, if they do things right, should be playing at night.
Hopefully.
But, you know, there is a, a reserve boys' basketball game in Thayer.